Good evening and welcome to the July 22, 2025, meeting of the Gloucester City Council. Tonight, in attendance, we have Board Two Councillor Dylan Benson, Councillor-at-Large Valerie Gilman, Board One Councillor Scott Memmard, Board Three Councillor Marjorie Grace, Councillor-at-Large Jason Grow, Board Five Councillor and Council Vice President Sean Nolan, myself, Tony Gross as the Council President. And in attendance, we have our, from the city, we have our mayor, we have Catherine Slickty, and we have Alex Koppelman, the Community Development Director. I shall continue on. Oh, and we have Grace Poore, our city clerk. Oh, sorry, Grace. I'm writing your name down. This public meeting of the City Council is recorded on Zoom with a link that is posted on the agenda. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak, as well as public hearings. If technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the City Council and a quorum is present, the meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minute shall note the interruption. It is the finding of the City of Gloucester that no individual shall be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. And we also have Kenny Costa, the city auditor, is also joining us remotely. We shall now have the flag salute. Next, order of business, Madam Clerk.
Oral communications.
Public shall have an opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council. Make their statement without debate, and the City Council will refer matters to the office of the mayor. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak? Name and address for the record, please.
Hello? Okay. Well, first, I want to pass these out. What I want to do first. Huh? Do everything fast, 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 fast. Anyway, okay. So, guys, all have that. That's about the Emerald Forest, wetland downtown Gloucester. We only have two open spaces left.
Patty, name and address first.
Oh, Patty, Amaral Myrtle Square, 14, right in the middle. All right. Right in front of this wetland. I just lost my concentration. Okay. So, what we're trying to do, the neighbors, and we've been to, like, eight Conservation Commission meetings, and we do not want a fence on the Myrtle Square side. This is where the animals come and go. If we're into starving animals, then let's put a fence on the Myrtle Square side. But if not, we need to not have that fence on the Myrtle Square side. We've been, we've had eight COMCON meetings, and we haven't been able to address this. And the next one is a couple Wednesdays from now, and I'm hoping that they're going to say, you know, fencing on the Whistlestop Way, where we know we have a lot of trash. And of course, that trash is generated from dumpsters overflowing and people littering and the barrels at the car wash overflowing. The wetland, I have been watching it for 18 years. I've been picking it up for 18 years. And it's a great wetland, and it's important, and the inner city needs it. Okay, that was my first thing. So, my second thing is, I talked to Dylan about the crosswalks and having dummies put at the crosswalks for safety. Me and my husband walk every day, and I don't even know I'm standing in front of you talking, because people do not stop in for the crosswalks. We have Downtown Neighborhood Association is a new association. We'll talk about that more when we have our meet and greet. And we would like to have these dummies put at all the crosswalks that are needed. They cost $200 apiece. I looked up. I'm probably sure the city can get for it less. And we can put them at all those intersections that people almost getting killed, Georges, Washington and Derby. The Downtown Neighborhood Association would like to be part of that. We've talked to Dylan about it in length. And because we live downtown, and we know where it should be. The third thing I want to talk about is the splash pad that has been on one year, one year, for the downtown inner-city children. The equality in the city is not working properly. I knew, I know that we put in a couple new playgrounds as I was struggling to get a handicap swing at Burnham's. This is not right. The splash pad not being on, this is not right for the inner-city kids. The equality is not fair. It's not equal. And, you know, with over a million dollars for the Magnolia pair, I think that we can get the splash pad up and going for these children.
Fifteen seconds.
So, I hope that you all agree with me on this, because it was up one year. I was on the open space when we put it on the, you know, did that grant, and it gave us a couple checkmarks, because we had a water feature, but it's only been working once. And that's just not fair. We put $200,000 into the Y splash pad, but yet, the inner-city kids don't have any place to cool off. So, let's think about these things when we're thinking about the downtown, because we need, we need Dylan, and we need everyone here to fight for the downtown. And I appreciate you letting me speak about these three things. And the Emerald Forest is very important. Thank you for giving me three minutes of your time.
Three minutes plus.
Plus. Absolutely. Anything else you want me to do, sing or dance or? I'll do anything.
Patty, I had to give mine to the clerk. Anyone else in the room that would like to speak at oral communications? All right, let's see. No one is online. Next door to business, Madam Clerk.
Presentations. An update from Alex Koppelman, Community Development Director, and Laura Smead of JM Goldson regarding City of Gloucester Comprehensive Plan.
Good evening, councillors. So, the comprehensive plan is something that I started talking about before I took office in the end of 2021, because as you're all well aware, we had the Plan 2000, which by virtue of its name, at that time, was 21 years old. And a lot of things have changed over the last now 25 years. So, right away, we got cracking on this. It started with Dave Fields, our previous Community Development Director. Alex took out the baton when he joined us, and we got Goldson into, as a consultant, to get things moving. And I've been quoted as saying, "The plan that's before us now is aspirational, actionable, and attainable." So, there's a lot of great things in there. It has over 4,000 touchpoints from people for meetings in a box, meetings at City Hall, surveys, email, the web. So, with that, I'd like to hand it over to Alex, who'll do a quick intro to the process from when he took over, and then hand it off to Goldson for the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councillors. It's good to be with you. So, tonight, we're presenting the final comprehensive plan after a two-year-long process. So, as the mayor mentioned, I joined the city about halfway through that process around this time last summer. So, I was able to really dive right in as a new Community Development Director and engage with all the wonderful community organizations, groups, stakeholders, businesses, city officials, all the many residents and voices of Gloucester that went into shaping this plan. So, it was a good way for me to get acclimated in my role. And now, I kind of have a plan of action in terms of what the Community Development Department and the city, working together, will work towards based on this visionary but very actionable plan. So, we're going to have Laura Smead, the project manager for the plan from JM Goldson. She's going to come up, and together, we're going to give a presentation of, you know, what went into this planning process, how we arrived at the recommendations in the plan, and talk about, you know, where we go from here in terms of, you know, turning these great recommendations into action. So, with that, I'll have Laura come up.
Hassan? Okay, good. Just have to talk and do it. So, first, I want to recap a little bit about what we've accomplished over the past couple of years. And then, if you would like, we can certainly discuss the comprehensive plan. And mainly, I also want to talk about next steps with you. So, first, I want to say a big thank you to everyone in this room and to even more who aren't in this room. So, none of this could have been done alone. And I worked with a great team from JM Goldson, as well as several very knowledgeable subconsultants that were on the plan. The planning board was with us every step of the way, so thank you. There's the chair here. And of course, the Gloucester staff, who worked tirelessly and were great partners with us to get the word out. Everyone was great ambassadors to the community. And of course, the department heads and the public and all the community groups, and everyone who contributed to the plan just helped make it stronger. So, the last time Gloucester updated its comprehensive plan was in 2001. The city has obviously evolved since then. I think that was touched on. There's a lot of new issues. So, this plan is looking at the next 10 years and how to meet some of these evolving challenges and opportunities that Gloucester is facing today. So, the plan is meant to be a flexible roadmap. So, it is, we often talk about comprehensive plans as living documents, and the reason why we do that is because we know that we are looking at the city now as a snapshot in time. And the vision that you've set for yourselves and the goals are the things that are going to direct you. While the strategies are certainly actionable, not all of them will be actioned upon, and you'll have to kind of keep it updated as you go. So, it's not meant to be written in stone, but rather to be a guiding aspirational document with some really good ideas in there that you know have the support of the community behind them. It's answering three main questions. So, there's different pieces of the comprehensive plan, and they don't all live in the same document. One, we are looking at forces that have shaped the community over time. We're looking at what makes you unique. And we are asking how the city would like to move forward in the next 10 years. So, some of the things we've done are looking at a detailed analysis of existing conditions, so Gloucester today. That's in one document. And then, in the main document, is the community's vision and goals for the next decade, as well as the strategies across a number of different categories, like zoning, like infrastructure, like programs. And then, there is an implementation guide, which is the less glamorous document, the Excel spreadsheet, which kind of names out some key responsibilities, as well as a lot of resources in there, funding sources, and case studies and things that can really give you a good jump ahead on taking those first steps, as well as the metrics and different strategies. So, comprehensive plans are traditionally have to touch on these kind of discrete categories that are very broad and wide-ranging. We like to think through these, address all these key categories, but in a systems-based way. So, we have organized the comprehensive plan around what we call themes. And you can see there are four themes there. Having an affordable and innovative place to live and work, thoughtful, engaged city leadership, preserving and sharing 400 years of history, arts, culture, and landscapes, and strengthening physical connectivity and public health. So, you have one main community vision, the overarching vision, for these four core themes, which is talking about kind of what matters most, 24 goals that direct what you're trying to aim to achieve, and 151 strategies to support the goals that kind of tell you how to get there. So, as I was mentioning, this started about two years ago. I was on the project from the beginning. And it's, you know, it's been, it's felt both like a long process and a short process, because it's almost hard to believe we're already here. But it, you know, it's just a reflection of a lot of hard work from a lot of people. All right. So, just quickly touch on the different phases. So, about two years ago, that's when we really tried to get an understanding of where Gloucester is today and some of the forces and trends that are affecting it, and how that can provide some opportunities to the community. Phase two was a deep dive into community engagement and around community visioning and goal setting. Phase three was when Alex joined the city and when we really started to develop some specific strategies to vet them. So, I'll let him.
Hey, yeah, I'll jump in from there. So, this was about the halfway point in the planning process. And at this point, the project team between city staff and the consultant team and subconsultants looked at all the data that was gathered over that year and all of the conversations and community engagement and going out and talking to people. And this is what the initial recommendations were based on. And then, we held a series of technical working sessions with experts in those different fields that comprised people from different boards and committees, such as the EDIC, you know, other organizations, the Chamber of Commerce, engaging with the Senior Center, engaging with community development corporations, all the people that really understand the nitty-gritty of specific strategies. And we worked through the initial list with them and came to a shortlist after a series of working sessions. And then, at that point, there was a draft of the recommendations put out for a public outreach campaign, which included tabling, putting flyers out in key locations like the Senior Center, YMCA. We did some specific targeted engagement based on gaps in demographics, trying to represent the people of Gloucester the best that we can. So, we asked people some basic demographic information when they would complete engagement events with us. We noticed that we were really lacking engagement from the youth. So, we partnered with the high school and the Gilnetter to really get some participation there, which was great. And I think it's something that we want to continue to do. Not supposed to be a one-off thing, but really trying to engage everybody. So, that's how we got to the priority goals. We had a survey that had 790 participants. And what they said were the highest priority goals, we reflected in the plan, which are overall priorities, as well as priority goals within each of the four themes that Laura mentioned before. So, then, based on all that information, based on conversations with department head managers, we finalized the recommendations and put the plan out for a month of public comment, reviewed all the public comments, and then, last week, brought that to the planning board, and the planning board voted to adopt the plan. So, that's how we got here. And then, moving forward, what we've heard a lot from the public, and I think it's a shared sentiment among councillors, is that we don't want this plan that so much time and effort and resources were put into to sit on a shelf. So, we've been very thoughtful about how we're going to approach implementation. We'd like to have an ad hoc committee that can represent many different boards and committees across the city to basically ensure that recommendations are being worked towards, be a resource to other boards and committees that may be taking the lead on a recommendation. We've created an implementation matrix, which will serve as a public dashboard reflecting progress made or not made in any of the recommendations that are there. That matrix also says which city departments, which boards and committees would likely be involved in implementing each recommendation. It says whether implementation would occur over the near, medium, or long term. It includes links to grants and funding resources, as well as case studies to prompt action on those recommendations and to serve as a resource. So, that committee will report to the Community Development Department. We'll work with them each year to provide an annual report on the progress made in the plan. And I think that's, you know, a good synopsis of the whole process. Just a quick summary. I mentioned there was a significant public engagement carried out to determine the highest priorities for the plan. So, that was done overall, as well as within each theme. The overall highest priorities based on public input were to upgrade public infrastructure, like water, sewer, roads, schools, and recreation facilities. There was strong support for really developing the city's walking and biking infrastructure and promoting health through that, as well as to support a comprehensive transportation network that really guides people to key destinations and provides better safety, and to increase community participation by improving access to decision-making processes, centralizing information, and strengthening communications. So, the four themes also had top priorities. In the first theme, the top priorities were to adopt policies to promote housing stability for residents at all stages of life and income levels. Business diversification to attract diverse industries to provide fiscal balance and security through expanded living wage jobs. In theme two, it was again to look at upgrading public infrastructure. So, that was the top priority overall, as well as within that theme. And then, theme three, it was looking at how to, you know, advance historic preservation and reusing historic buildings and landscapes to honor Gloucester's heritage. And under the fourth, again, to develop the city's network of walking and bicycle, biking facilities. So, throughout this process, we engaged nearly 4,000 members of the public, which, in my experience, and Laura has said in her experience as well, that's really good. That's really good engagement numbers. And it's not like we're taking a vote of every single person in the city, but it is a great poll that we did to try and hit every demographic that we possibly could, to represent voices the best that we could. And this is something that's going to continue. You know, recommendations in this plan, if they're acted upon, are going to require further public engagements. This is an ongoing conversation. Here's a summary of all the engagement that we did. We tried to meet people wherever you're at. You know, it can be difficult for people to come to one meeting on one particular night. So, we tried to go out into the community to different events, connect with different organizations, made it as easy as having a meeting in a box at your dinner table and submitting the information back to the city. I think that what is great to see is in the visioning survey and the goal prioritization survey, we got the greatest participation. So, I think, you know, what the public has said are priorities based on that, you know, is very strong. So, again, our next steps is to create an implementation committee. One thing that I forgot to mention is we've also developed metrics in each goal that would give us some numbers to quantify progress made. That will be updated as part of the matrix as well. And that matrix can also evolve as needed. Again, this is a 10-year plan. I mean, it's a plan for today and tomorrow, and hopefully, this is something that future city councils, future mayors, future administrations, future community development directors will be able to use as a tool to guide the future growth of Gloucester. So, with that, are there any questions?
Councillor Nolan.
First up, Alex. Thank you very much to the administration, also for all the hard work on this. It's a great detail. I do have a question for Laura. Laura, being an outsider, looking in and working as a consultant, if you could, and you don't have to answer this now, there's going to be a round of questions, give us the three things that are really unique about Gloucester and the three major things that we actually have to work on. And I'll let you think about that during the round of questions that you're going to hear. Thank you.
Awesome job, Alex, Laura, and team. So, I've got a question on the next steps. Specifically, annually, update the metrics. So, will that be like SMART goals, taking the higher-level goals and putting them into the different departments in terms of SMART goals with timetables? Is that something that you've talked with the administration about doing in terms of accountability and making sure that we're getting the work done, that all this wonderful planning has brought us forward?
Yeah, so, just to give you an example of the metrics, and that was something we put a lot of thought into, because if the data source doesn't exist, you know, how are you going to measure it? But there are certain things that you want to be able to see how you're doing on. So, for example, we could look at the subsidized housing inventory. We could look at how many affordable housing units we created in the last year. And that would give us a little bit of sense, and you could compare that year to year. So, we tried to use existing data sources as much as possible. There are a few things where we decided it would be worth the effort to collect that data and report on it. So, for instance, we have a rental registry in the city now. We want to be able to understand how many short-term rentals there are, how many accessory dwelling units there are, how many new multifamily units being permitted by different zoning districts, that sort of thing. So, we'll collect that information. And, you know, we may be able to introduce new metrics over time. In terms of the SMART goals, I really like that idea to be able to look at the information we have and say, you know, when we hit this number, we're meeting, you know, half the need of the population we're looking at. So, if we have this many affordable housing units and this many households that are eligible for affordable housing, you know, we're getting closer or we're not doing as well as we'd like to in that area. We'll be able to measure those things.
A quick follow-up question. Thank you. So, everything you said makes a lot of sense. I'm also thinking of individual performance metrics. So, for example, on the issue of increasing the bike lanes or something like that, is there a timeline that you, through the mayor's office, of course, who manages all of his staff, is there an opportunity there to create SMART goals for performance metrics, not just broader metrics for the different things we know we have to do, but rather, you know, how can we get that done in the next year? And what date? And how will we be measured? It's just my thought. And that might be something that the mayor has thought about. I know you've worked on SMART goals before, and it's just a concept that's really important, because we don't want this to just lay dormant on the shelves, as you have said very clearly. So, that's all. I'm just throwing that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Benson.
Just a few questions. The first question I have for you is you spoke about ad hoc committee. Could you speak to your, you envision it being members of boards and commissions? And in that, and then I have, then to go on that question, is you talked about youth engagement as well. How can we maybe bring youth into being members of this ad hoc committee? Because I know you said you were struggling getting young people in. And I'm on the millennial side myself, but an older millennial. But how do we get people? And I'm on the millennial side myself, but an older millennial, but how do we get people younger than myself involved here? Because I really am glad you pointed that out. But could you, going to that first, could you first speak to what you envisioned, just so I understand what you envisioned for the ad hoc committee? And then additionally, could we figure out a way to maybe get some young people on that committee as well?
Yeah, so the idea would be to have a committee that would be nimble enough to be able to go to other board and committee meetings and say, hey, did you know these are some recommendations that you would be the lead on or the support on? Let's talk to you about it. Let's give you some resources and kind of report back and be able to have lots of interaction and coordination with staff and people in the community to really keep things moving. In terms of engaging the youth, I think that there are some things the city is doing now, and there's a recommendation here to look at possibly having a youth council that's more involved in government here in the city. But in terms of what we did through the plan, I think that was a good starting point, but we don't want to just come to the youth when we need, you know, some information or input. We want to hear from them on a regular basis, and we need to build trust there. So I think we first need to think about, well, who has that trust? Is it a coach? Is it a teacher? Is it a principal? But what are some things that we could do to really get the youth more involved? In terms of having younger folks in general, I'd say that that's something that the plan identified as something to work towards in the future. Coming here, it's really clear that Gloucester has a tremendous community of volunteers and community organizations, but we also sometimes struggle to get quorum on our boards or to have new voices at the table. So there's recommendations here to do some kind of board and committee fair, try and get more people to come and get interested, do some more trainings with people. There might be a lot of youth out there that are really passionate about some specific issue, but they don't know how it relates to the Conservation Commission or the ZBA or something. So that's kind of what I was thinking on there.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I think really speaking to young people that they have a stake in this community, that they have a future in this community, is incredibly important. Thank you for that.
Counselor Groh.
There we go. Thank you very much for the presentation. A couple of quick things. First off, in terms of speaking towards the youth, I think that, I hope that that's not being limited to high schoolers, that we're looking at young families, that people sort of in the under 30 range, that hopefully will become the next generation that supports Gloucester moving forward, because I think that's a big problem. It's great to involve the high school kids. I think that's terrific. But I think it's really important to make sure that young families, young people who are setting up house and beginning to start their careers here, know that they have an important stake in this. I'm really interested in your, the commentary about affordable housing and business development. And I guess that sort of leads to my second question, which is, who's going to be driving some of these things? Is that articulated in terms of who's going to be taking the lead on promoting various aspects? I mean, the city council and the planning board obviously would deal with zoning issues. The Economic Development Committee or the EDIC or the mayor's office would be dealing with business issues. I mean, I see affordable housing and business development as sort of a chicken and egg thing, because we can't, we can't really track business until we have a place for people to live. You know, we can't, we can't make places to people to live until we have business for them to work. So where's that leadership going to come from?
Yeah, it's certainly a public-private partnership that involves a village. The city's role can be from a regulatory standpoint, it can be from trying to make that process smoother and easier and to encourage certain things that you'd like to see. The city's role may also be a convener of the community organizations, a convener of nonprofit partners that can help actually build the affordable housing that we want to see or run vocational programs and job training programs for the jobs of tomorrow. That was one of the major things that we heard from employers was that housing is difficult for them to be able to retain their employees, and so many people are commuting. So there are nonprofit partners that build the housing. I think the community's role is to say, this is how it should happen. This is where it should happen. This is what I need, and for us to listen to that and try and make that happen.
Thank you. One quick thing I'd like to ask, yeah, let me ask this thing you can talk about, is that we have this annual update publicly, that we have a public hearing where we go over the goals for the year and what's been accomplished, what hasn't been accomplished, where we're moving on things, and that it be very visible. So it's not just something to the council a year from now, but really heralded as something that's important for community involvement. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
I think one thing Alex alluded to early is the implementation committee, because there is so many complaints. I think every one of us, including myself, have, you know, squawked about the money we spend on consultants, no offense, and then just stick the thing on a shelf and ignore it. And I think Plan 2000, in the beginning, it was seen as the blueprint, and then over time, it just sort of like became this mystical thing that existed. So having the implementation committee makes a big difference. And they won't be necessarily made up of members of boards and commissions, but people who will be the ambassadors to the boards and commissions. And, you know, it'll be a very public thing, not necessarily because it's ad hoc, it won't have to follow the open meeting rules that a typical appointed committee would be, but it's something that's going to be ongoing, that we're constantly looking at this plan, updating it, and, you know, looking for information and feedback from boards and commissions, from the public in general, and most importantly, from the council. So it's not something that's going to sit on a shelf, because that means we just wasted the last four years of our lives on, which is something that I think came out with some great roadmap, a great roadmap with places we can get to easily in some cases, things that'll be, you know, more long-term to get to, and frankly, some things we probably will never get to. But unless we really take it, and if somebody's scouring through this report as a committee, and I'm open to any suggestions people might have for members, we've had people reach out already who have already indicated, I'd like to put on there, we can make this thing work, and it's just something that we're not going to review in 10 years to see how it went, something we're going to be reviewing ongoing.
Like to point out that the Plan 2001, as it turned out to be, had a planning and implementation review committee on it that was, that was very active for a while, but that was, you know, for the first, for at least the first half a dozen years, if not, if not the first decade. It was very active and it had very large meetings with all the boards and commissions on what was going on. So I think we can look back at that and see how that worked and see what members they had on there. I represented the schools when I got on the school committee on that committee.
One, two. There we go. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the mayor for spearheading this and this initiative. And Alex, Laura, sorry, thank you. And also I see Rick Noonan here as the chair of the planning board. I know the planning board plays the key role in all of this. So thank you to all of you and all the volunteers that came forward, not volunteers necessarily, but members of the community who participated in this. I also think, a thank you to the taxpayers, right? When you think about the costs of this, I think it was $350,000, taxpayer money, everyone has a shared interest in the results of this. So thank you to everybody that was participating in this and contributed. As I'm given credit, I reminded of a comment that was made at oral conversations in, I think it was March of 2021. It was Valerie Nelson, former Ward 4 city counselor, who said basically the same thing you said, that had been 20 years since the Plan 2001 had been finished, and that we should take the time to be thoughtful and look at the big picture stuff and vision. So she initiated that, and the mayor responded through a request that the council made to initiate this. Thank you for that, but also thank you to Valerie. National law 41D is the law that charges cities and towns with doing this, and it ends with a part that says, if you adopt a plan, you must have, shall have, I'm sorry, an economic development supplement on file if we're going to file, if we're going to apply for any grants. Have one already, and that could suffice with just an updating, and if not, then we need to create one. It says it could be as short as one page, but I'm, the question to you is, do we have one? Or is there an expectation to produce one? And I'm not sure if, let me read the section in the state law that says that, but it's a requirement, if we have a master plan and apply for grants, we must have an economic development supplement attached with this.
So that would be the economic development section of the plan?
Okay, this is suggesting it's a separate, shall prepare and keep on file within such city, an economic development supplement provided however the city or town, blah, 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 blah. I'd like you to read it at some point before we put the final coda on this, just to make sure at least there is something, a supplement that's, make sure we, I don't want to end up not qualifying for grants if that's the case down the road. So just want to bring that to your attention, and I've done that. And like Tony, Counselor Groh, National Law 41D. It's after letter G, it's at the last paragraph. Like Counselor Groh, I had the opportunity to serve on the Plan Implementation Review Bill Fonville, who served as chairperson for at least a dozen years, at least 10 years, I think, on that.
Yeah, he served when I was there.
Long time, and he really made a difference. One of the suggestions that came up then was, I should have read it earlier, that maybe we ask every board and commission, council, mayor, that if you're making a decision that conflicts with the plan, you have to have at least acknowledged and advocate for why. And the things are going to change, right? There will be emergency situations that might say, this was in the plan, but another scenario presented itself, we had to do something different. But the suggestion at the time was that if it went against the plan, here's why we're, here's a justification for that. Is that built into this any particular way? Could it be, even after the fact, can we say that? Yeah, I don't know why it's fading in and out, maybe because, sorry. I feel like it's really loud, that's why I back away. Good idea. So could there be a provision that simply says something like, it's okay if you have a decision that's made that conflicts with the plan, but you have to have some justification why?
Yeah, that's a good thought. I think that's going to happen, for sure. It's natural. The plan was drafted as a visionary roadmap, also kind of a menu of options that you can choose from as opportunities present themselves. So I think you can look at what's in there and decide you want to do something. There may be some times when something, a decision that needs to be made, you know, has other conditions and factors involved. In our implementation matrix, we have a box that says, you check it if it's, we decided not to pursue this, and you say why.
It's in there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
One quick clarification. You're correct, Counselor Worthley, that it was taxpayer dollars, but just so folks know, we utilize Opera funds. So United States of America helped pay for this, but, you know, it didn't come out of the general fund.
Good point. I don't have a microphone loud enough to thank the entire country, but appreciate the correction.
Counselor Memmon.
Can you hear me? We obviously have some work in front of us to do, but I want to say here that I was very pleasantly surprised as this process unfolded. I think you've developed some interesting group dynamic tools, and oftentimes they sort of stretch people's perception of what they expect, and then they realize that it's dragged them in somehow, it's engaged them. I thought that was very true for the meetings in the box that I participated in. It really, in the course of the, of the, doing the exercise, we really achieved some interesting communications and priorities. We're very, very clear, which I think is a tribute to the work that you've done and the skill set that you bring to this kind of a process. As everybody has said here, obviously, the next step is making it work, unfolding the elements of it. I know the Gloucester EDIC has been actively involved in some of these issues in the meetings that they've sponsored up at the Blackburn Industrial Park and addressing some of the workforce housing issues, the electrical infrastructure limitations that we're all struggling with. So it's a very complex issue, and we just need to get down and do the work now and in fact engage everybody, all the boards and commissions that part of their job is in some way to reflect on how they can help achieve these goals as they fit the scope of those boards and commissions. So thank you again. It's been a valuable process, and we're looking forward to moving forward.
Any more questions? Oh, Counselor Grace.
Hi there. First of all, thank you so much for your massive amount of work that went into this. It was an extraordinary undertaking, and the outcome is fabulous. Just harkening back to one of the comments that was made about grants and funding, do you fear or foresee or have a plan in place that will address the, you know, the landscape that we, the national landscape right now is very different than it was when this was initially started and, you know, through the whole process? And, you know, quite frankly, whatever we implement, we got to be able to pay for it. So is there, you know, how, what are you doing for looking forward to try to compensate for the likelihood that grants aren't going to be coming from the federal level as often as they used to?
Yeah, it's been a difficult thing to navigate, for sure. We've been focusing, because of that, more on state grants. Fortunately, we're in compliance with all state laws, and we're able to apply for those and have been pretty successful in doing that. The city's also supported by Community Development Block grant funding from the federal government that's housed under Community Development. We completed our five-year plan required by HUD, met the timeliness test and all the requirements to position us to try and retain that funding. There are some signs that that may be funded, actually, which has been a question mark. But we have to really rely on state funding mostly, I would say. Also, the city doesn't have to pay for everything. You know, sometimes the city's role is just to get the right people in the room, direct people towards that vision of the community. And some of these recommendations don't involve funding at all, they may be policy changes, things of that nature, programs. So it's something that we think about all the time, but we have to just, you know, keep doing our best in the landscape that we're in now.
Can I also just add, when the 4,000 touchpoints happened, I don't think there was any discussion about what grants should we get. It was more like, this is what we need, so we have to take it from this point forward. I think what's going on in Washington, maybe it's two years, maybe it's four years, but we'll get back to normal eventually. And this is a 10-year look.
Right. And I just have one more question. You mentioned also about, you know, affordable housing and building housing and where to put it, and this isn't so much of a question as a statement, that just to, you know, kind of remind whoever that the inner city has been, a lot has been targeted to, to try to build affordable housing. And I think it's important to kind of think out of the box and, you know, where can we put it in other areas in this city so that you don't have the inner city and the, you know, Ward 2 and Ward 3 saying, why us again? You know, it's been a bone of contention, you know, they do have valid points to a degree. And I just think it's important just to, you know, consider that and to think out of the box in other areas that it could be, you know, explored. That's all.
Yeah, we've certainly heard that feedback throughout several initiatives that we've had over the last year. And I think to address that, there were a lot of recommendations and priorities reflected around housing in this plan. So there was a recommendation to update our housing production plan. It's expired, they have five-year life, so the last one was done in 2017. So we're now going to be beginning a housing planning process. We've dubbed the process the Gloucester Housing Compass. We'll set a direction for housing policy today and tomorrow. And, you know, I think through there, we'll be able to look at development constraints, look at areas of the city where, you know, we don't want to encourage new housing development or very unique and dynamic place, there's a lot of development constraints, protected areas, areas that aren't sewered. Where do we want to invest in infrastructure? Where do we want to encourage growth? That didn't exactly, that hasn't really been there, right? So this plan... So this plan will provide an objective tool for folks to look at and say, you know, these are the areas where we encourage housing growth. This is also a venue to have community discussions about, you know, different places that people have been talking about, you know, changes that need to be addressed by the city in some way. And it's a proactive way for the city to say, okay, this is how we want to grow. This is where we want to grow, rather than reacting to, you know, new requirements or, you know, development proposals that aren't aligned with the city's vision.
Got some fabulous stuff that's in the works now going on for affordable housing. You know, it's exciting to watch it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Benson.
Hello? Okay. Two quick questions. First, to Mayor. I remember when Catherine joined, you had an interview on, I think, a local sports radio, and you spoke about the struggle of bringing in businesses speaking to this. And we look at specifically, could we look at attracting businesses that are in marine tech, these types of companies to be interested? Maybe looking at companies that are looking at studying the rising sea levels, these types of things, and maybe even also some other marine tech companies that may be doing advanced technology, stuff like that. But that is true, because this is where the end here. A lot of companies don't want to come in, and you made, I'm glad you made that point during that interview. But is there some companies that we could think that really would fit well in a community like ours?
Yeah, we're always keeping an eye out. And as you all voted in the new budget, there's a community development coordinator position that will help refocus on that. But we are the end of the line. We do have some shortcomings with power availability. But that's why through EDIC and my office and community development, working very hard along with our state delegation, trying to get some juice down this way, working with National Grid. But yes, and of course, the new harbor plan is going to be announced very soon. So there's, there's a lot of opportunity, but, you know, we, at the end of the line, have some, some obstacles in our way. But I think this plan and planning, looking ahead, really helps position us to start, be a bit of a magnet to bring people in that are not necessarily traditional Gloucester industries.
Could we be looking at possibly with some state and maybe down the road, federal money to our critical infrastructure in areas where we say we have these industrial parks, but we don't have the infrastructure to support it? If we could get money that's not our taxpayers paying, but get money to put the infrastructure in place and attract businesses, could that be something we could look at?
Absolutely. You know, Alex can touch on some of the grant opportunities we've been seeking. But as you know, federal tax, sorry, grants are a bit iffy these days, depending on what the subject matter is. Massachusetts still has some funds, and we apply every year for grants. And as ideas are brought up, we seek them out. So it's a constant thing. With or without this plan, that's what's been going on for decades in the city of Gloucester. And we'll continue to do it. And thankfully, we have very, what's our, we've got some oomph with our state delegation who can help get some money directed this way, either through earmarks or helping push through grants.
Sorry, I'm having, struggling with the, like others, speaking. Bike lanes, and specifically, could we be looking at maybe possibly bringing bikes, city bike? You look at communities that are, have narrow roads, just like us, Somerville, for example, but they've really perfected the art of bike lanes. And looking at maybe re, looking back at the way we created our bike loop many years ago. I remember when I was maybe 12, 13, going on the bike loop. Many times from... Is it working? Okay. From the downtown area and going towards like Rocky Neck, could we look at trying to bring that back up online and making those lanes actually safe so people are not fearing that cars are going down? And I know, hearing from constituents, my former, the Ward 2 councillor, we've talked about this, people just speeding up and down our streets. I think that's something that we really should be looking at. And I'm glad that this is here and not surprised this is here, because I hear from constituents, talk to the mayor, talk to my fellow councillors about pedestrian safety. So, but back to that, if we could look at bringing backs our old bike lanes and then looking at expanding that, and maybe even bringing in rent bikes. And then on that, we're talking about transportation, could we also look at not just for our residents, but for visitors, and making our beaches more accessible for those that say live in the city but want to come down, want to come up here? We say down, but they're actually coming up through. And some means of transportation at our train stops. Thank you.
Yeah, so there's a recommendation in here to pursue a bike and pedestrian plan at some point. And that is really what you need to comprehensively look at. You know, where are the connections? Where are the opportunities? How much with do you have in these different roadways that you want to look at? Attract grant opportunities that could pay for BlueBikes. There's actually quite a bit of BlueBike funding out there right now. Currently, the city is pursuing updating our ADA plan that has a lot more to do with walking safety and making it user-friendly for people of all ages. And I think, you know, when we get through that, it may be time to look at a bike ped plan. In terms of what we currently have, our open space chair and our public works director have done a great job looking at revitalizing the bike lanes that we have. There's bike lanes on the Boulevard, on Main Street, on Rogers Street, on Essex. So we're coming there, and you know, as you mentioned, we have a train station. So it makes a lot of sense to try and, you know, use that and improve our first mile, last mile, also really building on the great success that Kate has had with on-demand shuttles and things like that. I think biking is incredibly important. Bike and pedestrian safety and infrastructure is incredibly important for getting around, but it's also great for your public health. And I think it's a, it's a big thing for a tourist economy. When you go different places, and when people visit Gloucester on buses and cruise ships and things where they don't come with a car, they need a place to go, to get around. So it can be a good economic driver as well.
No, and lastly, and I won't, I won't keep Councilor President, is that it's great that we also have that water shuttle to take people to the great restaurants in Ward 1. And lastly, I do want to say just, I appreciate that you spoke to the accessibility and making our city more accessible for people of all, of all walks of life, people who are using wheelchairs, et cetera. I appreciate that, Mayor, your efforts on that and making our city as accessible for all people. So thank you.
Councilor Grace.
I just had a thought. With, not too long ago, a consultant was hired to do a parking study. Is, is there any thought or has there been, you know, any kind of tying these two things together?
Yes, I have reviewed the parking study. I think there are some good recommendations in there. Some things that we could do to try and encourage the better use of existing spaces. And I think that study supports some recommendations that get at that in the plan, as well as informing efforts that are underway now to establish a wayfinding system for downtown, understanding traffic patterns and where people park. And do you want short-term parking in an area to turn new customers over for businesses? Or where do you want to make parking potentially less expensive so that people are rewarded for parking further away and walking, things like that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, you know, all that talk about bike lanes, I think we also have to take into consideration safety of the bikers. You know, our roads, and being a former bike rider, it was sometimes, I would leave friends and say, well, I'm taking my life in my hands, I'll see you. And so that's a real consideration in Gloucester, too, that we need to, that we need to acknowledge and recognize, that we don't want to put false expectations that put people at risk.
All right, Councilor Worthley.
Yes, just one question. Again, thank you. When we did Plan 2000, well, Plan 2000, and then it became Plan 2001, because it took us a long time. Expectation was that it would be updated in 10 years. Obviously, it took a lot longer, and here we are now. Is there an expectation now that, let's call this Comprehensive Planning Initiative 225, 2025, when is the expectation that there'll be an update or is there one?
10 years is the lifetime of the plan. But, you know, maybe we do a bang-up job and we implement most of it, or some things just kind of aren't relevant anymore, or there are new challenges that need to be addressed. We could decide to do an update to the plan, like a formal update with new recommendations or moving recommendations that have been accomplished before that time. So it's, you know, it's in the hands of the, you know, whoever's the decision maker in the future.
All up to that. Given that this rightfully took about three years to pull together, two and a half years to pull together, if the goal is to have a new plan in 10 years, probably be looking at starting that in seven to eight years from now. Is there some mechanism that would trigger that, other than just common sense? I mean, I don't understand or know how or why there was that sort of 25-year gap when after 10 years, right, some people should have been saying, and there's no blame here, because not, I don't think any of us would have updated, but what would be the natural trigger to say, it's time to review the plan again?
Well, I think it would be, the vision is, the implementation committee is not a, doesn't sunset. It's like, you're the implementation committee for two and a half years, and then we just see how it goes. I foresee it being an ongoing thing. So in five years, they might say, well, this is how it's looking. Well, I'm going to rephrase that. They will be saying, here has how it looks, and we think we should start working on either a supplement or a new revision. Because, you know, Plan 2000, dial internet, dial up internet, you know, there were many different things technologically speaking. And five years from now, I'm sure it's going to be, this is going to look like the Dark Ages. So, yeah, so it's going to be ongoing.
Okay. I would like to thank you on behalf of the council very much for this presentation. Laura, you have unanswered questions?
Yes, I was asked to think about, I believe, the, the three things that I think make Gloucester unique, special, something like that, and then three things compared to other communities that are challenges. And first, I'll say, before I was a consultant, I was a public planner. And so implementation is close to my heart. I've worked on public, I've worked on comprehensive plans as a consultant, as a volunteer, on a board, and as a public planner. And hearing this discussion tonight really feels good to me, because I don't want this to sit on a shelf either, right? I do, I went into this field, you know, as a, as an optimist to try to make a difference. So I appreciate all of this thought, and I know it's going to be a lot of work on you, so I just appreciate that. But for Gloucester, some of the things that come to mind from getting to know you a little bit better over the couple years that I've been coming and going is your, you're on the ocean. I mean, it sounds a little obvious, but that is, not every community in Massachusetts is on the ocean. And your maritime history, it's such a part of the bones here in a way that I think is unique. Also, your artistic community is, again, I think such a part of this community's identity and something that you want to keep and preserve, but also something that feels at risk in this moment, given the other challenges that it's facing. And third, I would say, not every community has the kind of engagement that Gloucester did. It's, it's clear how much people are passionate about this community, how much they care, and how much they want to really see good done. So I appreciate that about this community. I've worked in other similar-sized communities, and you don't see that result. So that is actually really good. And as terms of challenges, I wish I could say these things are unique to Gloucester. But the truth is, they're really not. The, everywhere's facing these kind of changing demographics. You know, smaller households, aging households. And it requires a different way of thinking about both the type of housing that people need as well as affordability challenges and aging in place and all the rest of that. It's also deeply tied to your economy. And, and things like trying to keep artists here, and things like, how do you, how do you fund your, how do you keep tourists here? How do you fund this infrastructure that's coming and changing, you know, the dynamics around your maritime economy and things like that? So that was a very interesting conversation to have in this room, too, because that was what we were hearing, I feel like, through this process as well. And so I would say, you know, housing and housing affordability, those changing demographics, how you fund your infrastructure and how it relates to economy, capital planning, that kind of work, I think, is a challenge for Gloucester, as it is in many, many places. And lastly, you know, climate change. I mean, being on the ocean, it's just something you got to grapple with. It's something that's going to be more in Gloucester's face than it is in a lot of communities because of sea level rise. And so that's just something that relates to infrastructure, and how do you become resilient to those challenges in the near future? All right, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Laura. After reading the 70-plus pages of the report, I was very happy with it, watching some of the meetings in the Meeting in the Box, and trusting my colleagues to ask great questions tonight and understand what's going on. I just felt like I needed to ask you your opinion on how we're doing and what you think as a person that does this for a living, where we're at. And I want to thank you for that.
Yes. Yes, thank you. And, and I will take our problem of climate change over fires any day. With that, with that, we'll take a five-minute recess, if everyone's okay with that. Do we need to vote? And five minutes, five-minute recess.
What did you eat?
Barcelona I ate.
But I can go so much.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Confirmation of new appointments.
Counselor Nolan.
We have a confirmation for a new appointment tonight for Flavia Ryan. She is not here tonight. We did meet her at ONA, and she is a wonderful person who's gone through a lot of adversity to be where she is today, and we're lucky to have her. I have no problem reading the motion without, if it's not anybody else that wants to interfere. I believe she's been sworn in, and, so without further ado, on a motion by Councilor Grace, seconded by Counselor Nolan, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend the City Council appoint Flavia Ryan to Gloucester Cultural Council, term to end 2/15/2028, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Grace. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it, nine to zero. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The consent agenda.
Would any councilors like to remove anything off of the consent agenda? Counselor Grow.
I'd like to remove under applications and petitions, number two, memorandum for the planning director.
And I would like to remove under, where are we here? Consent agenda. Where is it? Under communications and invitations, number two, the recommendation on Mariners' medals. So anyone else? Counselor Gilman.
I'd like to remove the home rule petition. It is memo from the General Counsel regarding a private road home rule petition to be referred to ONA. Thank you. Number, number three. Thank you.
All right.
Motion to accept the consent agenda is amended.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Gilman. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it, nine to zero. Well, I guess in the order of business, it's Counselor Gilman.
So with your permission, I'd love just to hear from Mayor Verga just for a minute to tell us what this is, because a home rule petition is something that's, it would be helpful just to know about. I know it's in the packet, but I thought it would be helpful. So authorize that, I thought that would be helpful. He's here.
Thank you, councilors. I've spoke to some of you, I didn't get to all of you, so you recall, those who were in the last council, you voted for some changes to the ordinance related to road, private roads, and there was a priority list of, say, connector roads, or roads that lead to public facilities, things like that. We still do not have the ability to spend public money on private roads. As a matter of fact, recently MMA did another Zoom meeting about private roads, I'd recommend you all take a look at it. So no change in status. But somebody brought to my attention that we always have the opportunity to ask the legislature to give us an exception to a mass general law. So that is what this home rule petition seeks, and if you've read the home rule petition prepared by Susan Egan, it sort of, it doesn't sort of, it aligns with the ordinance changes that were made in the last session. If you vote to adopt this after it gets through the ONA committee, it goes on to the, our legislative delegation, and it's discussed there, and hopefully they will give us that relief. But it is not a guarantee, but this is sort of the last opportunity we have to try to give a little relief to the private road owners.
Thank you.
I was just going to move to refer.
Yeah, I guess so.
I'd like to move to refer the memorandum from the General Counsel regarding a private road home rule petition to ONA.
Motion made by Counselor Gilman, seconded by Counselor Memart.
I have a quick question. I thought we already accepted this.
I removed that.
Pulled it off the agenda, off the consent agenda.
I thought we had already accepted six N, but nevermind.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Counselor Grow.
I'd like to make a motion to waive notice to letters in accordance with GZO Section 1.11.4B, and set the public hearing date to Tuesday, September 9, 2025, and vote to refer to PND and the planning board.
Motion made by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Nolan. Discussion.
Just that this is a large zoning change, and typically those do not necessitate individual outreach to the abutting neighbors, neighborhoods.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The eyes have it, nine to zero. Okay, now I pulled item number two off of communications and invitations, and that is a, we need to vote on accepting the recommendation from the Mariners' Medal Committee on just a one pass-through, so we need a, and I make the motion that we accept this as the first pass-through, and then I will then go to the recommendation. So first, okay, motion made by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Memart. Discussion. None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it, nine to zero. Next, I'd like to move that we accept the recommendation of the Mariner Medal Committee to award the Mariners' Medal to Christian Daly, Carrie Dagley, I don't know why I said that, Christian Dagley, went to school with his father, Carrie Ann Perry, Christine Manny, and John Manny, for their extraordinary bravery and divisive actions at sea on June 24, 2025, and I so move. Motion made by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Nolan. Discussion.
May I?
Yeah, discussion.
I just wanted to mention that both Chris Lucido, our harbor master, was here, as well as Melissa Cox, who are on this committee, and they just left, but I wanted just to recognize them for being here tonight.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The eyes have it, nine to zero.
Mr. President, could we move for reconsideration, given the timeframe of the?
Absolutely.
Can I move for reconsideration?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion to reconsider made by Counselor Worthley, seconded by Counselor Memart. Okay, everybody knows how this goes, right? All those in favor? Roll call. Roll call.
Oh.
Counselor Gross.
No.
Counselor Grow.
No.
Counselor Majota. Counselor Memart.
No.
Counselor Nolan.
No.
Counselor Worthley.
No.
Counselor Benson.
Nay.
Counselor Gilman.
No.
Counselor Grace.
No.
Vote is zero in favor. The motion passes.
Motion fails.
The motion to reconsider fails, sorry.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next, we have a unanimous consent agenda item, and that is a vote to approve the letters to the Teamsters Local 25 and to Republic the first time they appear in front of the City Council. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Grow. Discussion. Well, this is a vote, first time, to appear.
I can, I speak.
Right, this is a vote to approve that we are allowing it to appear, so that's what that is. And then the next will have the motion to accept the letters. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The eyes have it, nine to zero. And now the next motion will be to accept the letters to send to Teamsters Local 25 and Republic Services, and I so move. Motion made by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Grow. Now, Counselor Worthley did bring this up a couple of weeks ago, it was, I thought it was a little premature, but now we realize that this is going on for a long period of time, so following that, we will, I hope that everyone is, thinks that it's time that we at least put our foot in the water as, between these two leviathans, or titans. I don't know how much we matter, or we'll get squished in the interim, but we, we need to have our say for our constituents. More discussion. Counselor Worthley.
First, thank you for mentioning that, we hadn't talked about that, but I'm glad to see that this is something that we'll be voting on. Of course, credit always goes to the DPW workers who are stepping up in the absence of this service, and then relative to this vote, I think it's simply saying, we support workers and encouraging Republic to stay at the bargaining table, or get back to the bargaining table to negotiate in good faith. And I think you're right, it may not make any difference, but doing nothing also doesn't make a difference, so there's a chance. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Any more discussion? Counselor Benson.
Thank you. I didn't do anything to it, I guess. I'm paying for this microphone.
Ozzy, man.
God love Ozzy. I appreciate you bringing this forward, and I will be supporting it. I will make it clear that I stand with the Teamsters Union. The Republic CEO makes nearly, it's upwards of, what I looked at this morning, $13 million a year, it's almost 2,000 times more than what the actual workers earn, so they should come back to the table. But I just want to make that clear, that I stand with the union, and demand, and many of the folks that live in this community work for Republic, they want fair wages, they want better health care, and they should have it, and as the Teamsters president said just the other day, Republic should come to the table. Thank you.
And thank you. All right. This can be a straight-up vote, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it, nine to zero. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The July 17 Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report.
I just, before we start voting on things tonight, I'd just like to point out an observation that I've had, and that's that some of us, or all of us, sometimes make a statement that we support something before we've heard everyone's arguments, or we're against something before we've heard everyone's arguments, and I think in order for fairness of every measure that we take up, we should withhold judgment until we've heard from everyone around this table. So I just hope that you will, people will refrain from saying, you know, I don't support this, or I support this, before hearing from everyone else, because there may be something that will change your mind. I just wanted to point that out, that it was an observation that I've had. Okay. You're up, Mr. Memart.
Thank you, President Gross. We had a regular Budget and Finance Committee meeting last Thursday, July 17, in City Hall, and there are a few items for your consideration tonight. The first was a memorandum from our Grants, Finance, and Compliance Administrator requesting our acceptance of the fiscal year 2025, fiscal year 2026 Community Development Block Grant. This is in the amount of $684,282, and I'll read the And I'll read the committee recommendation, which is, on a motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept under Mass. General Law 4453a, a federal grant in the amount of $684,282 for the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, for program year 2025, fiscal year 2026, and I so move.
Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero.
Item number two is a memorandum from the Veteran Services District Director requesting our acceptance of donations to support the KPN Veteran Services in the amount of $450, and on a motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept various donations under Mass. General Law 4453a to support veteran services in the amount of $450 from the following members and business partners within our community, whom are the Trinity Congregational Church, Mary Williams, and Ed Camo, for a total of $450. With our thanks, and I so move.
Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye, opposed?
Eyes have it, nine to zero.
Moving along, item number three on our budget and finance agenda was a memorandum from the Regional Prevention Director requesting our acceptance of the Massachusetts Collaborative for Action Leadership and Learning III, Mass. Call III Substance Misuse Prevention Grant in the amount of $250,000. And on committee recommendation, on a motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept under Mass. General Law 4453a, a contract amendment to the federal grant for the substance abuse, from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, or SAMSHA, and pass through the Massachusetts Department of Public Health Bureau of Substance Addiction Services for fiscal year 2026 and fiscal year 2027, Massachusetts Collaborative for Action Leadership and Learning III Substance Misuse Prevention Program Grant in the amount of $250,000. The total contract maximum obligation, total, the total contract maximum obligation totals $1,241,666 for all years. The purpose of this grant is to support the regional youth prevention network, to prevent and reduce this use of substances, and to delay first use amongst regional youth. The fiscal year 2025, 2026 grant period, for expenditure of these funds is $125,000 from July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026. The fiscal year 2027 grant period for expenditures of these funds is, again, $125,000 from July 1, 2026, through June 30, 2027. And there is no local grant, no local match required for this grant. We received a very good presentation from, remind me, Dave Tucker and Chelsea Goldstein, yep. And I so move.
Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, nine to zero.
Item number four from Budget and Finance is a memorandum from the Director of Elder Services requesting our acceptance of donations to support the Gloucester Council on Aging and the Rose Baker Senior Center in the total amount of $900. And on a committee recommendation, a vote of, by myself, seconded by Councilor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept various cash donations under Mass. General Law 4453a to support the Council on Aging programs and activities in the amount of $900 from the following business, the following members and business partners in our community, whom are Barbara Black, Ed Fisher, William Fisher, Vincent Libro, A.S. Gannett, Christine McGrath, Jose Malidno, St. Paul Armand, Paul St. Armand, excuse me, and the associated charities, for a total of $900, and we, which is received with great thanks, and I so move.
Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye, opposed?
The ayes have it, nine to zero.
And we were playing catch-up at this meeting, so we didn't have one earlier, so we had, we do the same thing again. And there's a memorandum, number, item number five, from the Veteran Services Director requesting acceptance of donations in the amount of $350. On a motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept various cash donations under Mass. General Law 4453a to support veteran services in the amount of $350 from the following members and business partners in our community, whom are Peter and Pam Lane, Lisa Bonneville and George Davis, Joan Muro, Linda Rust, Deborah and Michael Hickey, and Peter LaFatta, for a total of $350. With our thanks, and I so move.
Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
And finally, again, the same from, in item number six, memorandum from the Director of Elder Services requesting acceptance of donations in the amount of $300. On a motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept various cash donations under Mass. General Law 4453a to support Council on Aging programs and activities in the amount of $300, and this is graciously received from Citizens Bank. And I so move.
Motion made by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it, nine to zero.
That concludes the report from Budget and Finance.
Thank you. Next order, business madam clerk.
The July 14 Ordinances and Administration Standing Committee report.
All right, so we have number one, on a memorandum from the city clerk regarding an appointment of election officials for September 16, 2025, preliminary election. And then number four, 2025 general election. This is basically the poll workers and the elected officials and the registers that be working on this election. It's simply something that we do every time. I want to thank all of the people that have signed up for their service. And with that being said, on a motion by Councilor Grace, seconded by Councilor Nolan, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend in accordance with MGL Chapter 54, Section 11 and 11b, that the city council confirms the appointment of election of offers as recommended in a memo from Mayor Verga to the city council dated July 11, 2025, and I so move.
Motion made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Councilor Grace. Discussion. Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it, nine to zero. Next order, business madam clerk.
The July 16 Planning and Development Standing Committee report.
Got anything?
Got nothing.
Next order, business madam clerk.
Public Hearing 2025, Number 33, RZ 2025, Number Four, amend GZO, Section 1.4, Organization and Administration of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Section 1.4.1, membership, by deleting, each member and associate member shall have been a resident of the City of Gloucester for at least three years prior to his or her appointment to the board.
I will open the public hearing. Those speaking in favor?
Catherine Schlichty, as you know. I'm here, this was a little odd, it had to go to both ONA and BNF, because this is in the zoning ordinance requiring, you know, the makeup and composition of, pardon me? Thank you, ONA, BNF, the composition and makeup of the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board is the only board or commission that has a length of residency requirement attached to it. All the other boards say you have to be a resident of the city area of Gloucester, but none of them say you have to have lived here for a certain length of time. I've had the pleasure of doing two different stints on the zoning board. One was in the 90s, and one was just recently, I was on for five years. The last five years that I've been on the board, there's an alternate position that has never been filled. And I don't know why they have a length of residency requirement for the zoning board of appeal, but I can tell you from serving on the zoning board, for every application on the agenda, you go to the site, you look at the, the application, what relief they're asking for, you look at the neighborhood. There's been many neighborhoods that I've been in for, because of an application, I've never been in before, and I've lived in the city most of my life, so I don't know if the residency requirement really adds any value to the quality of a membership, of a member. But it, but it's just one more hurdle to get around when trying to fill some of the positions on the board. So the mayor's requesting that, that length of residency requirement be removed, so that zoning board has parity with all the other boards and commissions in the city.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor? No one is speaking up from online. Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Do we have communications?
Yes, the council is in receipt of a communication from Attorney Joel Favazza, who is speaking in opposition to this proposed amendment.
Thank you. Now, we are, questions from the councilors. Yeah. Councilor Worthley.
Or Councilor Gilman, if you'd like. She had her hand up. Thank you, Catherine Schlichty, Henry, sorry. Do we have a comparison to other cities and towns in Massachusetts? Are we the only one that has a residency requirement, as far as you know? I'm doing some searching, I see a couple that do, but do we have a comparison on what the average might be, or anything like that?
Quite a few have residency requirements. I don't know of any that have a length of residency.
I found one that has a 12-year residency. I can't remember where it is, though. I've got a lot of information, I'm reading and trying to research. There are other cities that have one or two, and then there's a five, but I don't have an average for the state. So, and there is a commission that doesn't require residency, by the way, in the City of Gloucester. Neither here, nor there. It'd be a good trivia question someday. Do we have any understanding as to why or when this came in as an amendment to the zoning code? Did it come in in 1969, when the whole code was created, or was it an amendment added at some point? And do we have any rationale behind that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have that information for you.
I guess that question could be to anybody in the council that knows if this was amended at one point to add a residency requirement, or if it came in as such. Also, has that answered?
I did take a look, and I couldn't find any evidence of when it was put in. There was notations of amendments to that particular ordinance, but it, it didn't have to do with the residency requirement. It had to do, I can't remember what it had to do with, but it wasn't that.
Thing is, the residency requirement was likely put in in 1969.
Would have been.
I have concerns, but they're not questions, so I'll bring those up.
Councilor Gilman.
Question to our CAO, thank you. So, without a three-year wait, what type of background would you generally look for to make sure that a candidate is qualified to do a job in our city?
Well, it depends on the board in question, but I would say for the zoning board in particular, typically, the types of members have come from construction, architects, land use attorneys, people who are familiar with land use and putting structures on them. There's no particular area of expertise called out for board members, but you do try to get board members that have some experience in the area that the board is at jurisdiction over.
And just a follow-up question. So without that three-year timeframe, so they're eligible as soon as they move here, would your administration under Mayor Verga suggest that, you know, they drive around and see the different parts, or would you give them some type of training to make sure that they know what the major, you know, some of the more controversial sites, and to give them a little bit of background? Is there somebody that could give a new board member on ZBA just a little bit of extra hand-holding, even the chair of ZBA?
Well, our current chair does do that. He goes, he goes over the zoning ordinance, he goes over the jurisdictional area that the zoning board has, has, and he goes over sort of the format of decisions and the standards that people have to meet when they present. And I don't know if he gives them a tour of the city, and, but in, in, I know for new members, quite frequently, either Joe or myself will say, do you want to go visit these sites together? And sort of say, here's the application, this is the relief they're looking for, these are the considerations that you would want to have in mind while you're reviewing the property. I mean, I think the planning board's also a board that, you know, land use and things happen in particular neighborhoods, and there's no residency, length of residency for that board, and it seems to have done quite well over the years, so, I mean, if I was to guess, there was a decision that was very controversial at some point, and people put the residency requirement in, but I don't know. But yes, there is a mentoring for alternates, and people start as alternates, you don't, generally, they start as alternates unless they have a high level of experience.
But they help towards the quorum, which is helpful.
Yes, if there is not, if needed. There's five regular voting members, if one of the regular voting members is not in attendance, one of the alternates will vote.
Okay.
But they always participate in the discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Worthley.
Thank you. Just a follow-up question. So if the requirement were simply, I think, 18 years old and a resident, which essentially is what removing the three-year would do, be 18, it's 18 and resident, that would mean there'd be about 25,000 people in Gloucester that could be potentially serve as a zoning board member. By removing the three-year residency requirement, we're just going from 24,000 to 25,000, right? There's probably 24,000 people that have lived here for at least three years or longer, and there's another 1,000 people still that have not lived here for three years or longer. So are we actually expanding, first of all, have we reached out to the 24,000 people that do qualify, and determined that the barrier is this group of people who just moved here the last three years, and now we're going to suddenly have more people available? Or do we done the outreach to 24,000 people that qualify?
Well, there's constant outreach being, going on. I know members of the board are, you know, ask interested parties. I know the mayor has done, you know, postings on, you know, the city website and various areas, looking for volunteers. There's still a lot of boards and commissions in this town that are not fully seated. And there was a young architectural student who, I mean, young architect who's just working at a firm, Ipswich, and lives in Gloucester, and was interested in being on the board, but he did not have a three-year residency, so we know of one person we lost, but I don't know if it's really would. And there's not been a particular outreach to new residents, no. Although I know one of our residents has really probably only been here four years, one of our members on the zoning board, so there are some relatively new people that come to town and want to get involved. He was a member on a zoning board in the last town he lived at, Massachusetts. He was a member on a zoning board in the last town he lived at, Massachusetts. So he wanted to serve again in this community. I think you see a lot of people like that who will come to town. I mean, I think the current chair of our community preservation committee served on that position in Acton when he was there. So a lot of times you'll have people return to town or come to town and want to share their expertise, so. Thank you.
Is that it for questions? Counselor Benton.
Thank you. Looking at other communities in and around, like our area, there is no, I've not seen any residency requirements. And from my understanding, we don't have a residency requirement for any other board or commission other than you have to live here. Is that correct? There's no like three, four?
A length of residency.
No length, yes, that's what I mean to say, no length of residency. I, yeah, and I think, as you've made points earlier, the mayor's office thinks that this will, what will this add if we get rid of this? What will, how will this benefit the community?
Then it just opens up the field of candidates who could, who could come. As I said, that, you know, Gloucesters, a lot of people like to retire here, and they come with a level of experience. And they may not have been here for three years before they decide to step up and get involved. And, you know, I think if a person, I think the real qualification is what's your background in land use and zoning or permitting or building, that you could bring that level of experience and knowledge to understand how a project is going to, you know, how it looks on paper and how it's going to play out when it's, you know, 3D on the ground. So I feel that those are more, the more important qualifications than any length of residency. And there is a small cadre of people who like to step up as soon as they get to town.
Any further questions? I'll close the public hearing. And could we please have the recommendation?
Indeed, on a motion of Counselor Groh, seconded by Counselor Gilman, Planning and Development Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent to recommend that the city council amend the Gloucester zoning ordinance, section 1.4, organization and administration of the zoning board of appeals, section 1.4.1, membership by deleting each member and associate member shall have been resident of the city of Gloucester for at least three years prior to his or her appointment to the board, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Groh, seconded by Counselor Gilman.
On the motion?
On the motion?
We discussed at subcommittee many of the issues, questions that were addressed here tonight. And I think probably the most compelling is that this is the only board or commission that maintains a length of residency requirement. It's not the only permitting granting board that does that. The Conservation Commission and the Planning Board all have great statutory powers in terms of making decisions that affect whether or not a property owner can do what they want with their property. It's also, it's the only board, I mean, we don't even have a residency require, requirement, a length of residency requirement for the mayor or for city council or for school community members. Somebody could move in on July 28th, pull papers and run for mayor and have no obligation to know the city or to have been resident here. I'm not saying that that's a good thing. I'm just saying that it seems odd to have a requirement that is based on this idea of knowledge of the city of three years. When, as CIO Schlichty just mentioned, she's lived here most of her life, there are neighborhoods that are not as familiar. And I think city councilors have had that kind of same experience going to site visits where you don't necessarily know the intricacies of each and every property line and development issue, but you learn them. And hopefully, we've put people on these boards and commissions that have the smarts to understand what's in front of them to be able to analyze and look at the law that they're being asked to address and make decisions that are sensible and in line with what the community standards are, but also what the law says. And I think it doesn't, if we're going to, if we're not going to change this law, then what we should do is put a residency requirement for every board and commission, which I think is a really dumb thing to do. People step up when they want to do good in the community, and we shouldn't be putting impediments in their way that don't serve a real purpose. We've had, we've had city councilors who run from out of state. I mean, that's, we're dealing with people who want to be here and want to be active in the community and want to help make decisions for the good of the community. We shouldn't be discouraging that.
Counselor Nolan.
This one's particularly important to me because we actually met the young applicant at ONA, and it was a fabulous person that was worthy and well-qualified. And I would have been happy to have on the zoning board of appeals now. The fact that you want to keep it with a three-year plan doesn't make any sense to me. Jason has just made a lot of sense about you can move here and run for mayor. A lot of people that move here move here by choice. It's not necessarily by job, but by choice. They love the character of our neighborhood. They're willing to pay a premium to live here. It was sad to see this person go. And the bottom line is that we have a hard time filling spots in our committees. And when someone wants to step up for it, we need to embrace that and welcome them if they're qualified. And that's how we do it. And to say that you have to live here for three years to understand the demographics of Gloucester, you could drive around for a weekend and understand Gloucester. And when you go on a site visit, you understand all the particulars, whether someone's going to lose a view. I mean, that's just human. You can see it. And I think that to hold a timeline on your residency to serve for the community that you actually choose to live in is unjust. I think that everybody should have a right, once they're a resident, to step up and be a part and support the community and contribute. And opinions may vary, and that's what boards are for. That's why it's not one person. We do not have a king in Gloucester. And that's why we have representation from entire boards. And I'm going to support this tonight. And I think it's very important. And I actually hope that the applicant that had came before us before will come back because they were very well-qualified for that job. Thank you.
Counselor Grace.
I think it makes perfect sense to make this consistent with what the other requirements are for boards and commissions across, you know, in the city. You know, being on ONA, the ONA committee, these people all come before us. And a very large percentage of the people that step up and run or run for these boards and commissions have not, are not lifelong residents. They've just moved here a year ago, two years ago, three years ago, five years ago, whatever. And most of these people start their their comments with, you know, "I've been coming to Gloucester since I was a kid with my parents on vacation," or "I've been, you know, it's been a favorite place of mine to be." So they are familiar with the city. They're not just deciding on, you know, the 27th of July to move here and then pull papers on the 28th to do something. You know, they have vested interest in the city. So it just makes sense to make it consistent.
Thank you. Counselor Worthley.
Thank you. I'm torn on this for a couple of reasons. I'd like to just have the council consider this. Firstly, I'm not one who says you need to be born here to serve. I think a third of this council hasn't been born here, and I think you all ably serve. So it's not native versus newcomer or you live here for 70 years and you were born in some other city. You're a native, as far as I'm concerned. There's two concerns I have. One, reason for it being different than other boards and commissions. We don't have that information, but I would argue that the zoning board has the most impact. It's not the only regulatory board, but has the most impact on the most people in terms of the things that come before it and their recommendations or their decisions. And only three members make up a majority. So three people could be deciding a lot of the applications that come before us or before the zoning board. The second concern I have is, and this isn't something to do with this mayor or this council, just thinking ahead. If there were an application pending or coming before the zoning board, you could have on either side of an issue, an extreme on development side and an extreme on preservation and the conservation side, literally put people up to move to Gloucester on a Monday and get appointed on Tuesday and be a voting member on Wednesday. And there'd be no chance to vet them because, as you know, the mayor gets to make the appointment, and then it comes through a process with the council for confirmation. And if someone moves here with the purpose of getting something approved or changed on behalf of someone else, we wouldn't know that and have an opportunity to weigh that. You'd like to think that the, knowing the community a little bit more would guide them. So with that, I would like to amend this very simply to make it a one-year requirement. And as far as I understand, the young gentleman would qualify. And so he could potentially be reappointed. But I'd like to amend the amendment, I guess, to have it be a one-year requirement for residency, and I so move.
Hey, motion made by Counselor Worthley on the amendment. Seconded by Counselor Benson. Question on the amendment. Counselor Groh.
One year, three year, five years? Why don't we make it? I imagine there's people out there that would like to put a 25-year residency requirement on city councilors. I don't think it makes any difference. And I think that the idea that you're going to have developers queuing people up to move into a town to get on a zoning board of appeals, assuming there's a position available, in order to pass a variance is not really a credible threat. And I think that we should really kind of deal with, with, I think, what is more likely, which is that we're going to discourage people from participating in their community.
Counselor Majota.
There is, there's still a process in line, and I understand what you're doing, Counselor Worthley. But there's still a process in a sense that the individual needs to get appointed by the mayor and then vetted in ONA and then vetted by whoever's on council. So there is going to be questions to be asked on why this individual is going to be on the board. And we've had people out there and they have been questioned, you know, a lot in order to make the point for all of us to approve. So I think that, you know, with I guess, a lot of authority that the board of appeals, the zoning, is that, you know, our questions will be more thoughtful and more like, "Why are you trying to serve?" I think, you know, Counselor Benson asks these questions all the time. "Well, why are you serving?" You know? And I think they will give you an answer. And I think those who want to come here, you know, want to do good for the community. And I'm just trying to be positive in a time that most people are not. I'm looking for the good. And I think people are going to move to Gloucester who want to run for the boards and commissions want to do it for the goodness and not necessarily for a personal stake or financial benefit.
Counselor Benson.
Just very quick. I believe everyone should be heard, so that's why I second it. I generally am agreeing with Counselor Groh. But why one year? Like, why, okay, instead of three, why one now? I'm just curious. That's, I just want to hear your thoughts.
President, if I may?
Counselor Worthley.
Thank you. So I'm going to combine the answer to your question with the question that I think Counselor Groh raised, which is, you know, why not 25? The reason why I think one year is it would prevent that possibility. And as Counselor Majota says, yes, we have the chance to vet them, but a mayoral appointee gets 90 days mayoral appointment gets to serve on the committee and vote on the committee, or the council votes to confirm them, because that's what's happened with the gentleman that was appointed just a couple months ago.
I only think they, and maybe if the council president, they can't vote, right? They can only sit on the, so say, no, say, we appoint, because he's saying, from what I've read, my understanding, and maybe you can also speak to this, is that if, say, someone is appointed to a board or commission, they have a 90-day appointment before the council votes on that appointment. But I, from my understanding, is they're not a full-fledged, they're just observing.
Full-fledged member.
They are a full-fledged member? Okay. But from what I read, that they were just they're full-fledged member.
As much as there is a process in place, to your point, Counselor Majota, that we get to ask questions, and we do ask questions, there would be that period of time where someone could move here on a Monday, get appointed by a mayor on a Tuesday and vote on Wednesday or whatever day the zoning board is. Thursdays, but and again, is it a threat? We wouldn't know it was a threat until after the fact, right? If there were someone that says, "Hey, I'm a big-time developer, I'm going to put someone to live in Gloucester," and this, you know, this is just, I'm not suggesting anybody here is trying to get any, there's no malfeasance here, just the possibility. You know, again, fast forward 20 years from now, we may not, none of us may be here. But we want to be thinking like, what was the council thinking back in 2025 when they reduced the residence requirement? And as I said earlier,
Answer his question on why one year rather than three years.
Because making it zero years doesn't add that many more people to the possible list of volunteers who could serve. Making it one year doesn't really take away that many people. There's probably about 30 people that wouldn't be able to serve if they'd wait another year. But in that year, maybe they go to a couple of zoning board meetings and say, "Nah, this isn't for me." Or maybe they go and say, "I really care about this, but I want to learn about where the reservoirs are, where are the schools, where's the congestion? Where's the air pollution? Where's the light issues?" And I think that, yeah, we're not going to know the entire city in one year, but you got a better chance of knowing the community when you've been here for a little bit of time. So I think one year, I was going to suggest two years. I think one year is a good compromise. And then to the last point about why this one board, it has a lot more authority and frequency of use than any other board. So there's a reason that our founding mothers and fathers put three years in there. And that's why I'd like to see one year. It doesn't preclude the young gentleman that was put forward and living here for a little bit, a year and a half. He was very qualified, as far as I was concerned. I'd welcome him to be reappointed. And I do appreciate the points of needing quorums, but we have 25,000 people that could qualify. So we need to do more outreach to people that could serve. That's my opinion. And I'd hope you consider the one-year residency requirement. Thank you.
Counselor Gilman.
On the amendment.
On the amendment, please.
Thank you.
Brief as possible. I know, but it's on the amendment.
On the amendment. I spend a lot of time thinking about this since our vote because when Attorney Fivazza sent us that letter, I really thought long and hard about it. I think it makes sense that we're consistent with the other boards. I liked the way Catherine Schlichty answered the question on making sure that people get necessary training. And third, everyone on the ZBA, they do site visits at the time that any, they're making any type of big decision.
This is the amendment of one year.
Right, no. And so I'm just saying
Not the whole thing.
That I am, I'm on the, I'm on the amendment. And I am perfectly, I'm not comfortable raising it to one. So I will not be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Counselor Grace.
Thank you. I think that if somebody was going to, you know, seek out a position on the zoning board or any board, and they had a nefarious type of agenda, whether they lived here a week or 10 years, that agenda's going to be the same.
Sorry to remind you, but this is on the one-year
Right, but these were his reasons for the one year.
But we're still discussing, we get back to the whole motion after this. So, you know, let's not go into generalities. This is on the one-year. Anymore on the one-year only. Roll call. On the amendment.
Counselor Groh.
Yes. No.
So it's Counselor Groh voted, Counselor Gross voted no. Counselor Groh.
No.
Counselor Majota.
No.
Counselor Memhard.
No.
No.
Councilor Nolan?
No.
Councilor Worthley?
Yes.
Councilor Benson?
No.
Councilor Gilman?
No.
Councilor Grace?
No.
The vote is one in favor, eight opposed. The motion on the amendment fails.
Okay, now back to the main motion. We are open for discussion on the main motion again. No more discussion from anybody? So I haven't said any, I, this, I was always under the impression that the charter called for, that you couldn't sit on any board or commission unless you had lived here, if there was a one-year requirement, residency requirement, which I don't know how I got that into my mind, but I always thought that that was the case. And to have one board to have the requirement that's inconsistent with all the others, while it is an important board, I understand that, it really doesn't make a lot of sense to have a standalone rule for one particular board that we did in this city. It's not a state requirement. It has, it's really something that we have no, no idea why a city council would have adopted this particular, whatever was happening, and we don't know what future. You know, we can talk about, you know, scenarios that go on and on into the future, but they really have no bearing on our vote this evening, because the future is always an unknown. Now, it is our job to make sure that the people who do get appointed by the mayor, who can appoint, you know, certain like-minded people that we may not feel is the best fit for the city, and ONA does a really good job of asking questions, and I have seen ONAs, you know, say, and under Sean's tutelage, I've witnessed saying, I'm really sorry, but I don't think you're the best fit for this position. You know, you just haven't had it, just because you want it doesn't necessarily mean that you are the best fit. So it, while it sometimes is unpopular, and we don't want to hurt the people's feelings, but it is our job to say, we don't think that you are the best fit for the city. So that's, all I have to say is that we really do, it is more important, our role in this is extremely important, and that's where it stands. So I will now call a vote.
Lady to comment, but not to change anything. I want to thank Catherine Schlichty for her two terms, or two tours of duty on the zoning board. We worked together many years ago on a couple of things, and it's not easy, it's a big responsibility, so thank you.
Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Gross.
Yes.
Councilor Grow.
Yes.
Councilor Majota.
Yes.
Councilor Memhard.
Aye.
Councilor Nolan.
Aye.
Councilor Worthley.
No.
Councilor Benson.
Aye.
Councilor Gilman.
Aye.
Councilor Grace.
Yes.
Vote is eight in favor, one opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing, 2025 number 38, council order 25 number 27, Benson. Amend GCO Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-273, Parking Prohibited Between Certain Hours on Certain Days, subsection G, be amended by deleting April 1st and adding May 1st.
Okay, we are at the, the public hearing is still open, we are at the questioning period. So the question was, is why from April to May? Councilor Benson.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I know I get long-winded most of the time, but I promise, right now, I will not get long-winded. Oh, you're counting the clock. But, okay, so this is really, this was put forward originally April 1st, and then it was brought to my attention from the Vice President, and also Mike Hale, that the signs had been printed to May 1st, so, and their plan was for DPW to start street sweeping on May 1st, and that is why I brought, once I was aware of that, Councilor Nolan, I said, I'm going to bring forward this change, and that is why. So that's it.
Thank you.
Surprisingly, I'm finished that quick.
Yep, thank you. If there's no other questions, I will close the public hearing. Oh, that's all right, we're deliberating. I mean, I guess you can ask it during deliberation. It is a fellow counselor. Okay, so you want to?
On a motion by Councilor Grace, seconded by Councilor Nolan, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend the city council amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-273, parking prohibited between certain hours and certain days, subsection G as follows. When the signs are in place, given notice thereof, it shall be unlawful any person to park a vehicle upon the following streets or parts thereof on Tuesdays between the hours of 12:00 p.m. midnight and 6:00 a.m., from delete April 1st, add May 1st, through November 3rd, in order to conduct street sweeping operations in accordance with section 22-159?
November 30th.
November 30th, sorry. In accordance with section 22-159. I so move.
Motion made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Councilor Gilman. You had a question?
A simple question for me, to understand. When it was brought forward, when it was brought forward for April 1st, that came with a recommendation from the DPW director, and I think Council Benson brought the motion forward. Is that correct? It had, the DPW director supported this, right? That's a yes on the record.
It was an error. It was supposed to have been May 1st. And in translation, and going through everything, it was said April 1st, and we didn't catch it. The DPW went ahead and made the signs for May 1st. And so the signs went up as May 1st, but the ordinance read April 1st, but the intention was to be May 1st. So it was essentially, it was an error within the council, not the Department of Public Works, and then we had to go back and eat crow and make it work, because we made a mistake somehow in translation. So that's the bottom line.
We're not changing the intention.
It's certainly cheaper to amend it on paper than it is to rehang, re-put 150 signs.
And that was where I was going with that. So I think on the same wavelength.
And that's, and if I may, just very quickly, this was brought to my attention by the DPW director, and we were going back and forth of where, what date we were going to go, we want to go. I was thinking April 1st, he was thinking May 1st, and then eventually, and then it was brought forward, but then the signs were made, and again, that is why I brought this forward again. It's going to be much cheaper than putting up new signs. And people are starting to get adjusted to this, starting to learn when street sweeping is, it's a new, it's a change of habit. Yeah, okay, I know that, okay, sorry. Yeah, sorry.
And so my question was, are we going to have to pay for new signs? And the answer is no. Thank you. Got it.
All right, and for technical issues, we are going to reread section G. When signs are in place, given notice thereof, it shall be unlawful for any person to park a vehicle upon the following streets or parts thereof on Tuesdays between the hours of 12:00 midnight and 6:00 a.m., from delete April 1st, add May 1st, through November 30th, in order to conduct street sweeping operations in accordance with section 22-159. And again, I so move.
Motion made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Councilor Grace. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing, 25 number 39, council order 25 number 29, Gross. Amend GCO Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Division 14, Open Space and Recreation Advisory Committee, Section 2-554, Authorities and Responsibilities.
I'll open the public hearing, and I will speak in favor. The members of the Open Space and Recreation Committee meeting were just concluded a two-and-a-half-hour meeting, so I'll be speaking for them. This came to our attention in an email, asking for some clarity, because they didn't have the authority to be putting signs, is where it all started, on describing trailheads. And that's where it started, and this is where it wound up to be, and it got more inclusive and as, and legal, and the mayor's office both approved this, this language that then makes it without their advisory group, but they are now giving, given more scope of things to advise on. And they, and that's what they wanted. They wanted to be able to, they recognized the need that was not there, available to them in the ordinance. So that's, that's, that's that. That's all I got to say about that. It's pretty self-explanatory, it's all written in the packet, if anybody has any questions. So now I got to ask if anybody else wants to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in opposition? Do we have anybody? Communications?
There are none.
Questions from the councilors. Councilor Worthley.
Thank you, thank you for bringing this forward, Councilor Gross. You said that in your testimony on it, that this gives them the authority to make decisions on signs, but the language actually still says, it still says advise and recommend to the mayor. So it just gives them more range of things they need to work on.
That they can advise upon.
The committee doesn't make the decision, they make recommendations still. Makes sense, thank you.
Yep, still has to go through the, yep, yep.
Got it, thank you.
All right, any other, any other questions? Questions over there? And so, Councilor Grow? I'm going to close the public hearing.
On a motion by Councilor Grace, seconded by Councilor Nolan, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend the city council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Division 14, Open Space and Recreation Advisory Committee as follows. Section 2-554, Authorities and Responsibilities. A, the Open Space and Recreation Committee shall act as an advisory committee to the mayor, city council, municipal boards, and the general public on matters concerning open space and recreation, and shall have no budgetary powers. Add, the Open Space and Recreation Committee may advise and recommend to the mayor rules and guidelines for safe and responsible use of the list of properties identified in the current open space recreation plan. Appropriate signage, maps, guides, education materials, and other relevant information for printed publication, public display, and the city's website.
I so move. Motion made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Councilor Grace. Discussion.
So I have a couple of things to say, I'll be very quick. The Open Space Committee has a very thorough strategic plan, and it's completed with a lot of input from residents. And I think one of the things that is important is that we help them with the tools of how they can do a more thorough job, looking at the totality of all the types of signs that we have in the city, so there'd be more opportunities for consistency, and I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, I'll be supporting this as well. Sorry, I'll be supporting this as well, I just wanted to, there's a word called heteronym, which has a word that's spelled the same and sounds different. Councilor Nolan, you said appropriate signage, but it's appropriate signage, so that there's no money involved. Appropriations is different. So it's appropriate signage, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Like signage that's appropriate, not inappropriate.
Right, you just, you pronounced it in a different way, which is fine, I would have too, but then I realized it's not about appropriating, but...
Correct. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Nine to zero. Next order of business, we're about to run out of battery, but I will...
Public hearing, 2025 number 40, council order 25 number 31. Nolan, amend GCO Chapter 6, Cemeteries, Section 6-22, Composition, Appointment, and Terms, Section 6-23, Powers and Duties, and Section 6-24, Regulations.
I'm going to open the public hearing. Those who want to speak in favor? Yeah, okay. Speaking in opposition? Do we have any communications?
No.
Do we have questions from councilors for whomever did not speak? And I will close the public hearing. Committee report.
On a motion by Councilor Grace, seconded by Councilor Nolan, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend the city council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, Cemeteries, Section 6-22, Composition, Appointment, and Terms, Section 6-23, Powers and Duties, and Section 6-24, Regulations as follows. Section 6-22, Composition and Appointment and Terms. The city-owned cemeteries advisory committee shall consist of, delete, three members, add five members, and up to two alternates, all of whom shall be residents of the city, one non-voting advisory member who is engaged in either the funeral, monument, or florist business, and the DPW director or his designated as an ex officio. All appointments are to be, for three years, and made by the mayor, subject to the approval of the city council. Member term shall be for three years. Powers and duties. The committee shall have the authority to recommend a yearly budget relative to the management and maintenance of all city-owned cemeteries, subject to the approval of the DPW director and the mayor, with a final approval of the city council. The committee shall advocate for the well-being, add, and maintenance of all city-owned cemeteries. The committee shall recommend to the director any changes in the rates for perpetual care lots in the city-owned cemeteries. And the director shall propose any rate increases to the mayor under chapter, section 716A, who shall provide the proposed rates to the city council for their approval under chapter, section 716A. Absent a recommendation from the committee, the director may propose such changes. Section 6-24, Regulations. The committee may propose regulations relative to add, care, and management of the city-owned cemeteries, subject to approval of the DPW director and the mayor, under chapter 7-16B, in approval and adoption by the city council. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Councilor Grow. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
For council business, for council vote, old business, correction of Scrivener's errors in the June 17, 2025, special Gloucester City Council meeting minutes.
Okay, I will make a motion to amend the special city council minutes of June 17, 2025, to correct a Scrivener's error throughout and to approve the same as corrected. Motion made by Councilor Grow, seconded by Councilor Grow. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Counselor's request to the mayor.
Okay, we go to, who's after me? Councilor Grow.
My, my requests to the mayor have already been submitted.
Okay. Go from there. Counselor Majota?
I will be sending the mayor a few requests tomorrow, to thank the DPW for the hard work over this weekend, for the recycling. I went there, dropped off some recyclables, and wow, what a great job they're doing, and they're all smiling and helping everyone else. So it's just great to see that. So thank you for the entire DPW staff.
Counselor Memhard?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Counselor Nolan?
I want to thank the administration for working hard with the Department of Public Works, and also the community for coming together. It's not one single person or any motion, it's all things that have come together for forward motion, and people have found ways to get things done with the recycling. It hasn't been the easiest thing, but it's certainly been fairly smooth with smiles, as Counselor Majota had said. The DPW staff are working some overtime and doing duties that aren't really included in their daily day. But the community as a whole is doing much better than some surrounding communities, and I think that's because it's Gloucester. And I've read things on Facebook, a neighbor's helping neighbors out, bringing recycling when they couldn't get it there, and if not, trying to help them put things back in their yard and making it a better place. Unfortunately, it's a tough situation. It's a situation where private business is affecting public affairs, but it's something we can't control, but we can come together to create a solution for temporary, as best we can. I believe that the administration has worked hard with the Department of Public Works, and I can't thank them all enough for coming together to make this happen.
Counselor Worthley?
Thank you again to the DPW, as we all are saying, the operation is running as smoothly as possible, with some people working hard, including the administration and DPW employees, so thank you. And they have additional work they need to try to keep up with, and I give them a lot of credit for juggling it all. I submitted some requests to the mayor. Sorry. There's a Beatles concert tomorrow at the gazebo. Want to remind people about that, at, I think that's Ward 5 technically, isn't it? I don't know if it'll be an Aussie tribute at the Beatles Fab Four concert, but I hope to see you all there. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Benson?
Thank you. And first off, I want to also join my fellow counselors in commending the DPW, they're doing a hell of a job. And also, I want to also commend the mayor and the administration for joining in with several other communities in our area, in suing Republic in the courts, and hopefully we can prevail there. And as I said, and I just want to clarify, as I said earlier, with what is happening here, and standing with the Teamsters, looking at what Republic is doing, they're not negotiating in good faith, and you look at the disparity in pay between an average worker making $56,000 a year, and the CEO, fat cat, making nearly $13 million a year, a pay discrepancy of[1456.21][1456.25]$23,000, 23,000%, nearly 200 times more. And a couple of requests that I've sent, as well, to the administration, and in addition, I also would like to see a request in what the administration is looking to do with area communities in Cape Ann and on the North Shore, in collaborating and working together to combat climate change, as we see in action at the federal and now, at the federal level, and sadly, at the international level, but what can we do collaboratively with our neighbors here on the North Shore and on Cape Ann? And just a reminder that tomorrow in Ward 2, we have the farmer's market as well, and hopefully folks will join that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gilman?
So, I've got three very quick things. Anasquam Seafire this Saturday, July 26, starts at 10, ends at 3. I'll be working at the bake sale table, if anybody wants to come by. I'll tell you all the best things to eat. And also, we have Hello Dolly, which is this year's Anasquam Village Players show, and it begins officially on the 5th through the 10th. And on the 4th, we once again have invited seniors for our preview night from Rose Baker and Rockport Council on Aging. And we're providing locators, providing transportation from here to there, and it's really an exciting event. So, any seniors that are watching this, if you're members of Rose Baker, you can get your tickets here at the Senior Center. And also, just in terms of the DPW, obviously, I'm really proud of the DPW, and I also wanted to say one thing about social media. We can really change the temperament of how people are positive and kind by how we promote good work from our city staff. And when we can take photos and make them feel proud, and then you see people are sharing them and feeling, all participating and making them feel good, we're helping them get through these tough, long hours, just because we value them. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Grace? Oh.
I just wanted to, your mention about SNAP and EBT benefits, this is really for the council, if you come across people, you know who've got SNAP benefits. They are eligible to use SNAP benefits at farmer's market, they buy fresh fruits and vegetables, and that gives them a credit on their EBT. So if they have $100 in SNAP, and they spend $20 on fruits and vegetables at a farmer's market, not a grocery store, they can get that $20 back in terms of their groceries. And I only bring that up because it was recently told to me, and it's just something I think everybody should have in their arsenal of knowledge. Thanks.
Okay.
Counselor Grace?
Thanks. Yeah, we're about midway through our summer season here, and I was just curious if we, if there are any or possibility of updates on where we're standing with the short-term rentals, if there's been any data collected as of yet. And number two, I'd like an update on what the status is with the request for a traffic study at Centennial, Washington and Grove Wonky Intersection. And thirdly, you know, I don't think we can give enough kudos to the DPW. Mike Hale and his crew are amazing human beings, and we are so very, very lucky. I have the utmost respect for each and every one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been reminded that I was supposed to tell everyone that to please read, the health director asked that we make certain that we read the site suitability study for the CND transfer station. And tomorrow at 4:30, we will be giving awards to the people who are responsible for the rescues and life-saving efforts at Good Harbor Beach and in the Anasquam River in front of Winger Sheek on June 24th of this year. It was, could have been a very tragic day for the city, and it turned out to be something that we can be proud of, or that those people should be proud of their actions. I don't know if we can take any, any credit for any of this. They, they just went above and beyond. And, and that's at City Hall in Cairo's Auditorium at 4:30. So, that's, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Majota. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it.